Yeah, I mean, I'm done with my 2015 budget. I don't worry about the past. Can't be too good. Too good on your budget. Doesn't look good. If it stays dirty and snows once in a while, I'll take it. I haven't heard different. The only problem with Tuesdays, though, is he refs. He didn't say anything, but that would be my guess. Sure of that. I'm not courting these young kids anymore.
You're only ten minutes away, aren't you?
Everyone, Stan, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Bill, I thought you were refing. No?
Okay.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Anyone have any additions, questions, changes to the agenda? Nope. Not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing in the agenda, it looks like, Chris, this is your thing. You're gonna talk a little bit about municipal state aid streets.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. For some of you, this will be a little bit of a recap of what I went through last year. We spend, obviously, quite a bit of time referring to the state aid system. We talk about projects where we're using state aid funding. In fact, for the 2015 project this year, a portion of it is going to be eligible for state aid funding. So I like to kind of recap and help us so everybody kind of understands what the system is and how it works, what the funding is. And we also have the opportunity here now, this year, where folks at home can listen in. I did hand out for you, I won't get into a lot of detail on neither one of these, maybe more for your own enjoyment later, a little pamphlet that was put out by MINDOT State Aid. There are a few extra here in the back, if anybody here's interested. Explains, again, basically, the highway user fund or gas tax, Minnesota gas tax funding, how that is distributed to the different entities. So to get into it here real briefly, the municipal state aid system. The purpose of the state aid program is to provide resources from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund to assist local governments with the construction and maintenance of community interest highways and streets on the state aid system. The highway users' tax is basically the Minnesota state gas tax that we all pay. Currently, that's at 28 and 1/2 cents and is distributed to the state, the counties, and municipal state aid cities, which New Prague is a member of that system. So highways and streets of community interest are those highways and streets that function as an integral network to provide more than just local access. State aid funds are the funds collected by the state according to constitution and law and distributed from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund and apportioned, again, among the state, the counties, and the cities. And that's, again, cities over 5,000 population qualify to be in the state aid system. And again, is used for construction improvement and maintenance of those streets and systems. So how that's apportioned, the highway users' tax distribution in 2015 is estimated to be 1.8 billion. You can see a little diagram in this pamphlet, if you look at the lower portion of it. It shows, again, the sources of the highway users' fund. The revenues come from gas tax, license fees, motor vehicle sales tax, and interest. And then you can see how that is distributed out. 1.8 billion distributed out, again, between the state, counties, and the state aid cities. So 62% goes to the state for the trunk highway system, 29% to the counties, to the county state aid highway system. We have county state aid highways within town, 37 or Seventh Street, Columbus Avenue to the north, First Avenue southeast. Those are county state aid highways that receive this type of funding. And then 9% is distributed to the cities that are part of the state aid system. And I've noted here, this year, there was one city added to the state aid system. We went up from 147 to 148 cities in January. And from that, the cities are going to be distributed about 155 million that is distributed out to the cities through a process to allocate or apportion that to the various cities. And I'll get into that briefly. So each city's apportionment is calculated based on a couple of different things. By population, obviously, the big cities get a larger share based on population. They take half of it and they apportion it strictly by population to those cities. And then the other 50% is allocated based on what they call needs. Historically, the process was, there was an exercise that we had to go through every year to file, we had to file a needs report to state aid, and it was basically to say, what would it cost New Prague to bring its entire state aid system, state aid street system, up to standard? What would it cost? What would we need to do that? So they go through a bunch of formulas and fill in a bunch of tables, and you come up with an estimation. And the way it came out this past year was about $9.4 million would be needed if we were to bring all the state aid streets up to the required standard. To me, that number sounds a little low, but that's how it played out. So they basically look at what all the communities report as their need, and then the rest of that 50% allocation is distributed to all those communities based on that. That process has changed as of this year. There's gonna be a three-year transition where they're gonna change from this complicated reporting to strictly looking at what is the traffic load or the average daily traffic on the state aid streets. And I'll give you a little picture here of what the state aid streets are. So it's going to actually become less complicated to report, and it's gonna really help us focus on the streets that really carry the traffic, which is really what the intent of the program was. So what we do is we take 20% of all the local mileage, so that's all the streets within the city. We can designate 20% of the mileage. We can pick streets that we say are streets of interest, collector streets, minor collectors, and we designate them as state aid streets. And that's where we can choose to utilize funding, state aid funding, when we do improvements. For example, Sixth, sorry, yeah, Sixth Avenue on the 2015 project is a state aid street, and we're proposing to utilize state aid funds to do the improvements there, which will help lower, again, the amount of general levy that would have been needed to help fund that project.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
Once you make the designation, it has to stay correct?
No, we can change it if we have not used state aid funds within 20 years. If we haven't used state aid funds within 20 years, we can re-designate it, which is what we're proposing to do this year. If you look at the map that should be before you there, obviously, it's hard to see the actual names of the streets, but if you see all the streets highlighted in purple, those are the streets that currently are designated as part of the city's municipal state aid street system. If you see to the west, you can see Sixth Avenue, for example, the north-south stretch there is on that. What we're proposing to do this year, because of the change that has taken place in how streets' needs is designated, is we're going to look at revoking some mileage and moving it to other places where it's more advantageous to the city, where there's an opportunity to capture more revenue. An example, the way the old system worked, for example, 10th Avenue over on the east side was designated as a state aid street when the city first joined the state aid system. Logically, it was a street that should be on the state aid system, but because it was built by a developer, built by development, it was brand-new. It actually didn't capture what we call any needs. Again, this gets kind of confusing, but the city was actually capturing very little revenue from that street under the old system. Under the new system, that's going to come into play over the next three years, it's gonna be based on traffic. Well, that's probably the highest traffic street that's on the state aid system. So what we're going to do is we're going to look at streets that are currently in the state aid system, that are low volume, and we're gonna try to look at places where they'd be more advantageous to put. If you look over on the west side of town, we actually had designated some streets that were, that are nonexistent, that were intended to be future collectors or minor collectors. Under the old system, if it didn't exist, it actually captured more needs, or if it was an improved road, it actually captured more need, and the city captured more revenue. Under the new system, because there's little or no traffic, we won't capture as much revenue. So again, we're gonna look at streets where it would be to our advantage to move it elsewhere. And some of the places we'll look will be back over towards the east end of town, around the Chalupski and Third Street southeast. Some of those we'll be looking at. So Ken and I'll spend some discussion and Glenn and look at where that makes the most sense to move those. So we will be bringing, the intent is to bring those back. It does take a council action to revoke streets and designate as others, and then it has to be improved by MINDOT. And it's pretty much a straightforward process. That help, I hope?
Will you be doing traffic counts, then?
We will try where we can, and fortunately, there is a video. The old way to count was by ropes, and you couldn't do it in the wintertime, but now we have the opportunity to do it by camera visual.
We have a radar counter that the city owns as well, so we can do counts year-round now. And it's very, very accurate.
Yeah.
Here's what you can tell.
So there's a series of different thresholds of traffic levels, and we're not gonna get in, there's like a third level, which is, we're just not gonna get into that in any streets here on the state aid system. But we can get out of what we call the first level, which is the little to no traffic, up to a second, first or second level. So we certainly have streets where we can improve the revenue opportunity here.
Chris, you said it's a three-year process?
Yeah, the way they did is, because there's gonna be certain communities that are going to be impacted by these changes, and there's certain cities that are gonna actually find it, it's gonna become an advantage. And actually, New Prague, the early projections is this will actually be to our advantage because a lot of the state aid streets are already improved. And so under the old system, they weren't capturing as much need, and under the new system, because they're, streets are improved, but they have higher volume, we'll actually have the opportunity to capture more revenue.
So does that happen? Do they?
Again, over a three-year process, it'll transition from the needs of the previous system to the new system over three years, and so the impact, it won't be as great.
So is it kind of like a third, a third, a third?
Something like that, yeah. And so eventually, by three years, we'll be up to, completely into the new system.
Okay.
And that was, the old system, I think, has been in play, as far as I know, since the inception of the state aid system, which was back in 1958, and had never been changed. And I think over the years, all the city engineers saying, it was really a game, was what it was, of trying to maximize revenue, and really, the logistical was, we want these on the high-volume streets. These are the streets that carry the traffic. That's the intent of this program. So moving to the next slide, what kind of dollars are we talking about? In 2014, the city's allocation was $272,531. Of that, 133 went directly to the city. It was a check that was written out, and it was used, basically, for maintenance on the state aid system. It's budgeted into the city's budget. The $2,4398 actually goes into what they call a construction account. You can't draw on it until you have a project that qualifies. You submit an application, the city gets a check, and therefore, it can be used for the construction need. In 2015, we're estimating it about, similar to what it is this year, but about $278,000, again, 25% into maintenance, 75% into construction. Our estimated balance as of January 1, a couple of weeks ago, was estimated at a minus $200, or $200,000, I'm sorry. If you recall, we took an advance on the Second Street project, and we're proposing this year to take another advance on the Sixth Avenue project, which would bring our balance down to a minus $560,000. Now, what I like to tell you is, when we talked about advances, was it's kind of like a line of credit. We have the, the rules allow us, if the money is available in the funds, in the funds for the cities, that we, that the rules allow, an advance up to five times our annual allotment. So it's interest-free. In fact, we almost get, we get a little bit of money because we're actually showing that we have greater need because we have a negative balance. So we can use that as not only, some cities will just use it, they'll save up to use it. Where those that really know how to use the system properly will actually use it when they need it and borrow against it, or get advances, I should say, and then it'll get paid back as our annual allotments come in. So again, I notice that we, note that we can allow up to, or state aid allows up to five times an annual allotment as an advance. We may actually be looking at an advance again in about another couple of years. We have another state aid project. We won't be back out of zero, but we'll have the ability of that line of credit if those funds are available. Again, the funding can be used on the state aid system, like Sixth Avenue, Second Street that we did a few years ago, or it can also be used in what we call off-system improvements. If, for example, the county does a project, and the city's gonna have a share of costs involved, we can use it on county state aid highways. We can use it on trunk highway projects where, like the roundabout that was done a few years ago, there were state aid funds that were used as some of that funding. We're gonna be looking at a Main Street project sometime in the not-too-distant future, and certainly, there'll be state aid funding that'll be utilized for a portion of that. I don't want to get into too much detail on this table because it's a full bunch of numbers, but this is, you're gonna hear a lot of talk this year in this legislative session about gas transportation funding, and specifically, gas tax or mileage tax. And for, kind of, to help understand the impacts, and anybody that's listening at home, this will kind of helps paint the pictures. And I'll try to just briefly go over what I've handed out here. What I'm showing here, this is just a summary of a bunch of numbers of the state aid system over, from '58 to 2015. The gas tax, I've highlighted where gas taxes have increased over the different years in like 1975, '80, '81, '83, '84. From '88 to 2008, there were no changes or increases in the gas tax funding for over 20 years. You can see the number of communities that have changed in all that time. In 1958, there were 58, and currently, we're at 148, if you go to the next page. When New Prague joined the state aid system, there was 131 communities in there. So we're now 17 communities more. What that means is we've added more pieces to the pie that distribute to more cities. So if we go over to the other column, just to kind of, and I explain this, needs, so if you look at this column called Actual Construction Needs, if you add up all the state aid cities and take all what they've estimated as their need to bring up their system into compliance, we're at about $6.2 billion that's needed to bring the entire state aid system in the city, in the state of Minnesota up to compliance. Annually, right now, they're, again, they're estimating about 100, in this column here, about $154,000, I'm sorry, $154 million that'll be distributed. And if you take, this is what the city engineers look at each year, if you take every $1,000 of need, and again, this gets kind of, gets a little gray and confusing, when New Prague joined the system, for every $1,000 of need, each city was, received about $20.39 in allocation. If you look down at the bottom, even though there was gas tax increases in 2008, that went from 22 to 28 and 1/2 cents, the allocation that cities are getting has dropped from that $20.39 in 2003 to $12.04 for every $1,000 of need, and that is continuing to drop. In fact, when we city engineers meet every year, we almost, it's a little disheartening that the available funding for transportation continues to drop. So when you start hearing gas tax, state of Minnesota, it does affect you, it does affect New Prague, it affects the counties, it affects, obviously, the DOT as well. And this is mirrored throughout the entire transportation system, not only locally, but at the state level as well. So, and if you look at these two columns, the, well, actual construction, adjusted construction, they're basically the same, but the, since New Prague joined the system, the construction needs have increased 140%, while the apportionments have only increased 41%, just those since 2003. Again, it gets a little confusing, but this really paints the picture of what, where we're at with transportation funding in the state, and when there's gonna be a lot of discussion, again, this year on gas tax, mileage tax, and things like that. So hopefully, that didn't sound too much like the engineer on the soapbox, but again, that kind of paints the picture for the state aid system, how it works, and what that means to you. And again, what my role is, I've been in, again, one of the next things is our proposal for the annual administration of the state aid system. We meet at least twice a year, the city engineers in the district, review this with MINDOT, we have the needs reports, mapping reports, certification of mileage, and then just basically constant contact and communication with state aid. That's part of my role, and I've been involved with that since, basically, when I first got involved as an engineer, I've been doing it in Van Nuys Heights, Maplewood, as well as here, in that process, working with the state aid system. So, any questions, I guess?
Anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like, I have one question. So what you're asking for is another $2,400 to determine if we're gonna change the roads or not, right?
Yeah, I'll be reviewing that as part of my normal process, but we'll have to, we estimate it as hourly, but basically, we have to go through, we'll have to prepare a report or application to MINDOT. We have to prepare a resolution that you'll have to approve, and then it'll get sent off to MINDOT. I don't think it's gonna be that much, but that's in case we get through, go through a bunch of other processes. But yeah, that would be stuff that we wouldn't plan to do annually, normally annually. We haven't done it since about 2010, I believe. We did some re-allocations and assigning of state aid routes.
So what are you guessing, how many hours is that gonna take?
Well, you know, 2,400 is probably about 16 to 18 hours. So, and that's probably conservative. And again, it was meant to be hourly, so what we don't use, we don't use. But it would be specifically for the re-designation of the state aid routes. And it'll only be, there'll be a handful of streets. So we, kind of a balance act, because we have certain mileage that, you know, if we move a mile here, we need to find a mile here. And maybe we have a nice, perfect street, but it's 1.1 miles, and I only got a mile. So we have to, it's a little bit of a puzzle piece and number game, so we gotta make sure we make sense where we're putting it and where we're taking it off.
The other piece that you didn't mention is you relocate or reexamine, we have to be able to connect from city streets into county or other state aid roads. It just can't be a piece anywhere in the street system. It has to actually have interconnections to the other governmental roadways. So if you look at our existing map on all the connections, everything connects between city roads, county roads, and city streets, then?
But once we make that re-designation, the only time we can use those funds are on those specific streets.
Correct. And again, a street that we've already used state aid funds, Second Street, we can't move that mileage, and we have no reason to move that mileage because that's a perfect spot for it. But if we've already used funding on it, we have to keep it there for 20 years before we can re-designate it somewhere else, if we wanted to do that. Or you pay back. You pay back the funds that you used on that.
Never want to pay back.
Doesn't really make sense. Although, well, there's times when it makes sense, but, you know, it just means you're gonna use the fund somewhere else, so.
Any other questions, comments? Mike, do you have any other comments? Okay. If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the services by SEH for our municipal state aid streets.
We'll move.
Again.
I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Bruchek. Any other further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That was informative. Now we know when they talk about the gas tax, at least we know we got some skin in the game. So, yes. Next on the agenda, we're very fortunate to have Brent Pearson here from Region Nine Development Commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, city staff, for having me here. I'm very appreciative of your time, and I want to be respectful of your agenda. So what I put in front of you here is a portfolio that outlines all of the things that Region Nine Development Commission does, as a regional development commission enacted by legislation in 1962 and founded in 1972. So if that sounds like a sales pitch, I don't want it to. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you a brief overview. I'm not gonna ask you to do anything. If you could, just take those with you, review them at your leisure, you can review them along with me here, but I'm gonna give you a brief overview about our programs and the things that we do. Better? Thank you. And then I'm going to explain to you why I am here. So I promised Mike that I wouldn't go over 10 minutes on your agenda, and again, I want to be really respectful. So what I have in front of you, one of the things in there is a PowerPoint presentation that's 27 slides. And when I looked at this, I thought, oh my goodness, that's at least 45 minutes. So I have outlined this, and it's gonna be almost bullet points, and I have a series of those here that'll outline those programs for you. Well, who are we, first of all? Just a brief reminder of who Region Nine Development Commission is. Again, we're a regional development commission, enacted by that legislation that I mentioned earlier. We serve the nine counties, which includes 72 cities, 147 townships in south-central Minnesota, including the counties of Blue Earth, Brown, Faribault, La Sueur, Martin, Niccolat, Sibley, Wasika, Wattenwan. I know New Prague borders, includes Scott County as well. So our mission statement is that we're your regional partner for progress. That's who we are. We're a planning agency. We are one of nine RDCs across the state. We're governed by a full commission and board of directors comprised of local elected officials. They can include county commissioners, city councilmen, cities representing, or citizens representing various populations. For instance, some of the people that we have on our commission represent minority populations, and then various government agencies. As a planning and development agency, we focus on six key things. First one is community and economic development, transportation planning, homeland security and emergency management planning, aging, nonprofit, we have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit arm called Region Nine Area, Inc., in which we can apply for grants from foundations and serve as a fiscal sponsorship for community development programs. And we administer a federally funded revolving loan fund with dollars through the federal EDA system. Well, that's all in a nutshell. If you permit me here, I'll give you a little bit of overview on what each one of those programs looks like. Under community development, we are housed, the various programs we have housed in our community development department include economic development, which is how we administer our federal EDA dollars. So in order to be eligible for those federal EDA dollars for federally eligible programs, you have to be included in our SEDs, our comprehensive. for federally eligible programs, you have to be included in our SEDs, our comprehensive economic development strategy. We sent out a survey, some of you may have seen those, in which we ask your EDAs, your city councils, your chambers, what are some of the programs, what are some of the projects that you see that would be eligible for federal EDA fundings? EDA will then, if we put that in there, and we decide, you know, we're going to pursue an application, and we meet all the criteria, EDA will fund up to 50% of the project cost, maximum of $1 million for industrial parks, infrastructure and development projects. And there has to be, since it's federal EDA dollars, it has to have a creation and retention of jobs component to it. Now, the second thing that we do is, we create that SED. So, we sit down, we survey our communities, we write out the strategy for the region through the help with, of all of you and all of our other communities as well. We also work with workforce development. So, we work with local business, key stakeholders, our community and economic development committee, to identify some ways in which we can align some of those programs with that SEDs. And then, of course, we align ourselves with a lot of deeds, business, and community assistance programs. Department of Employment and Economic Development has a lot of programs out there, including the Small Cities Program, through which they administer HUD dollars. That's one component that we do, economic development. Then we have a community development department. We're a planning agency, much like you see in any other county or city. Our community development department, think of it as a community development department that focuses on all nine of our counties. So, we have similar approaches, we just represent a larger area. We work with community and county comprehensive plans, community hazard mitigation plans, county multi-solid waste plans, GIS mapping, data compilation and analysis, brownfields and redevelopment, renewable energy task force focuses on renewable energy programs, dollars to be able to administer some of those, and then we work on the small cities development program. We have a transportation planner on staff, which, who I know Ken has worked with in the past. He works off of a MINDOT planning grant that we received, we have him in the office. And he works with our transportation advisory committee on area transportation partnerships. One of our big signature things right now, which you'll see in the portfolio there, is Safe Routes to School program. We work with Active Living for Communities, which I believe we have just received 300-some surveys from Ken's department to be able to look at that a little bit. So, thank you, Ken. Area transportation improvement plans, functional classifications of major roads, we meet regularly with Highway 14 and 169 corridors. Then we have also a Homeland Security Emergency Management Plan. So, through the state's HSM, Homeland Security Emergency Management, we received a grant to be able to bring a planner on staff. And he works on more of a region-wide emergency management planning. He's also helped us to get our foot in the door with some of the hazard mitigation plans. And the acronym escapes me now, but he works with THIRA, which is Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment Plans, and the T, put me on the spot, I can't remember what the T stands for off the top of my head. I mentioned Region Nine Area Inc., where we use our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status to serve as a fiscal sponsor to communities on community development projects, to access foundation dollars, grant dollars, solicit tax-free donations in most cases. That also includes grant writing and packaging, researching of available grant opportunities, and we operate a grant opportunities forum two times a year. Now, regarding our RLF, which is another thing that we administer, we have four different RLF programs. One is a nine county, represents all nine counties, it's for for-profit businesses. We receive $400,000 to be able to push out to our communities. One of the key components to that is you have to show that you employ full-time skilled or semi-skilled workers. The minimum on that is $10,000 per award, the maximum is $100,000, so we can fund anywhere from 40 to four projects. The interest raised are based on perceived risk and prime lending rates. We have a six-county RLF, which is $90,000. That represents all the counties in the region, excluding the two counties in the Mancato, North Mancato, MSA, as well as Brown County. Again, you need to show that full-time skilled, semi-skilled workforce. The minimum on that is $10,000, with $60,000 maximum. We have a micro-enterprise loan, a tornado fund, and all of this, I'm not going to go into too much detail on our RLF packages, but all of this is governed by our RLF committee, which is composed of local bankers and Region Nine Development Commission commissioners. We also serve as a fiscal host for Minnesota River Area Agency on Aging. And what that is, is their mission statement says that they're a gateway to resources for older adults, caregivers, and service providers in 27 counties of southwest Minnesota. So, if you think of community development as pillars, this is just another leg on that pillar for another area that we're able to serve. We are their fiscal host for 2015. In 2016, now, they've decided that they're going to be a standalone nonprofit, so they're going to give it a go. Right now, they are currently Region Nine Development Commission employees. We still have them as a partner in our office, and we still work quite frequently with them. Their core functions are fund distribution, advocacy on behalf of seniors, information and assistance. They consult with community planners, community development folks, coordinating programs and projects that represent the 65-plus-year-old population. In fact, they work with us on a lot of our programs as well. And of course, they staff the senior linkage line. Now, I wonder if you'll permit me, I'll just give you real quick here on some of our recent successes. We've recently provided technical assistance to Farm America for an Xcel Energy 2014 Renewable Energy Development Fund grant. That was a $600,000 award to identify solar and wind projects that we've outlined, that our renewable energy task force has outlined for us as key priorities. We recently received a NATO award, now that's North American Development Organization, it's not anything else, in which we received national recognition for the Highway 169 Reconstruction and Flood Mitigation Project. And we also received a National Transportation Planning Award in Excellence. So, our transportation department has been recognized nationally. We've completed two hazard mitigation plans, one was in Wattenwan County, and one we've just recently received a contract for in Fillmore County. Our commission has allowed us to work outside our region, because there is not an RDC to the east of us, Regional Development Commission to the east of us. And our commission has, is very progressive, forward-thinking, and has told us, hey, you know, you take care of stuff at home, we don't mind if you step outside your community bounds just a little bit. We received a state MPCA grant to conduct a climate change vulnerability assessment and adaptation plan. So, we're in the early stages of that planning process, in which we're assembling a climate change adaptation task force, as we call CCATF. We continue to work in our communities on safe routes to school plans, again, see that handout. We've served as fiscal sponsor to local community projects ranging from $1,000 to $750,000. We're currently working to update a comp plan in the city of Henderson. We've packaged grant applications for multiple minority advocacy groups through our Region Nine Area Inc. arm. And we continue to serve as a regional expert in data analysis, GIS planning, GIS mapping, and regional planning. And again, I mentioned that we are unique in that we take, we serve nine counties, so we take the nine-county approach to planning. So, that was a mouthful. I'm almost exhausted. So Brent, why are you here? You're not here just to tout your accolades, right? Well, that is one thing. I like the fact that over the past four or five years, we have built this program up a little bit. But, our commission in La Sure County is currently represented by La Sure County Commissioner Steve Rolthing, and then we have representation from Richard Peterson, who represents our townships. We recently had a resignation by one of our La Sure County Commissioners, his name is Bill Wensel, he's in the city of Montgomery. He represents cities under 10,000, and we need to find a replacement. So, the process is, I'm not going to muddy you in the process, because we're going to follow up here with a letter to you from our communications department, as well as Nicole Grinswich-Mickelson, our director, our executive director, on how that process is done. But in a nutshell, we need to get the message out to every community in the county. So, we certainly appreciate your time. I've been told to conclude with send us your best and your brightest, but I think I'll hold off on that a little bit, and just, we would appreciate any type of person that you might want to refer to us, and we'll go through the application process and explain the onboarding process with them.
What is the time commitment, or?
Time commitment is we meet three times a year, then we also have various committees that they can caucus for at our annual meeting.
When is your annual meeting?
Our annual meeting is, typically, our last one was in November. So, that's, once those, once our commissioners caucus for those positions, then we get the word out, or we send them out a form or a letter that just says, you know, we know you caucus for this place, and then we'd like to put you on this committee. There are several committees, and I also have outlined all of those in this packet here. I'd be happy to take any questions on that. Or one thing that I would like to do for you is make reference of my business card in there. If any questions come up, I get out the door, and you think, gosh, I wish I would have asked that guy this, send me an email or give me a call. More than happy to field those questions for you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Brent right now? Well, we appreciate you coming out here and enlightening us on the Region Nine, and also telling us about the opening in our area for La Sure County, that you're looking for the board, and we'll see, maybe someone will be interested or not, but we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. Is it Patty time? Yeah, all right.
Let's be quick.
Patty, are you going to go to the front? You're going to stay there, but please speak into the microphone.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
In front of you is the proposed resolution amending the 2014 city budget. Each year, staff reviews the department budgets in order to ensure that the budgets are balanced for year-end auditing purposes. Based on the proposed budget amendments, on the expense side, various departments are being increased for a total of $63,000, $63,500, with the, while the council mayor discretionary fund will take a decrease of $63,500, resulting in a net $0. On the revenue side-
Now, what did you say, the council mayor, we took a decrease? I just wanted to make sure that, okay. Because I usually get enough flack about the mayor, council mayor discretionary funds, so I just want to make sure that that is noted.
On the revenue side, we received a couple of large increases, in specific, delinquent property taxes, state grant, court fines, building permits, and franchise income, which is our cable TV.
What was the increase for that? I mean, is it just, just the number of homes or whatever?
Right.
So, that's what it's related to?
That increase in revenue resulted in approximately $114,700. With that being said, staff discussed establishing a capital fund for the Memorial Park Baseball Improvement Project by proposing to increase the operating transfer out account by $100,000 for this purpose. Staff is now looking at council to review and approve the resolution amending the 2014 general fund budget.
So, we're going to show that positive $14,700?
Yes.
Is what you're recommending?
Yes.
As a supplement, we're not quite done totally, that's from a budget standpoint, it would be a positive-based end result based on the budget. Actual, we're still not done receiving all of our December 2014 bills that are still coming in in January here, but as we take a look at it, when you look at the recommendation on the additional set aside or transfer on the baseball, and I guess I'll take the responsibility in that piece, that I won't put that onus on Patty, that as we look ahead, we got two choices. We can include it in the recommended budget amendments here at year-end and to actually budget for it, or as we finalize and work with the auditors, we could wait and do it as a transfer as part of the realignment of the ending fund balance for the year, which will still come to you at a later date. We thought it prudent, as we begin the discussion here, working with the baseball committee, and I think I sent you preliminary materials last week that just showed you, we had a baseball meeting. And there's quite a wish list there, so to speak, but in trying to take a look at how we manage this, that you put $110,000 in the 2015 budget, as we take a look at year-end, is we're probably going to end up somewhere in the vicinity of, oh, give or take $150,000 to $160,000 on the plus side of the ledger, so to speak, for revenues over expenditures for the entire budget, somewhere in that approximate range, 150 to 175, somewhere in there. And either we end up with a higher fund balance, and you transfer at a later date some part, or allocate a certain part of that ending fund balance, or we do it as part of a transfer. We've not formally set up the actual improvement of the count, and so this would be kind of the first step in moving in that direction, but we've got funds budgeted this year. No monies would be expended in that program area or that project area until such time as the council identifies and takes a look at the recommendations that'll be coming from the community baseball committee. So, all you're doing is moving assets out of the general fund into that capital construction account for decision-making at a later date. But we just thought from a budgetary standpoint, better to pick it up now at this stage of the game, and actually budget for it. You'll see, from an auditing standpoint, is that in the audit comparison, the way that they do it is that you will see the actual adopted 2014 budget, you'll see the amended 2014 budget, the actual expenditure, or actual revenues or expenditures, and then the variance between the actual and the amended budget. And so, in taking a look at it, where we've had a number of things that have occurred throughout the years, we've just kind of captured them and held them, and are bringing that to the table at the end here. We're not recommending an increase on the expense side, because we had, if you remember, a fairly large allocation in the contingency for a number of different projects, and in the fact that we received an increase in our LGA this last year. And so, it's an opportunity to set some monies aside to address the baseball improvements at a later date. We're probably going to have to add to it in '16 and '17, and we have a further recommendation to try to deal with it, along with funding from some other sources. But we're going to wait and try to bring that total package to you in March, when the baseball committee finishes their review of evaluating all the proposed capital expenditures, the priorities, and what they think they want to put together as a recommendation to you. So, this is just kind of a head start in the process of having you transfer some monies, set that aside, and beginning to help fund that, so that we can hopefully undertake some of those expenditures in the coming months.
So, would that be identified then in the notes, in the audited statements?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, that money would only be used for the baseball?
Correct. If for any reason, when you take a look at the final total budget, when you look at the revenues and expenditures, and let's say you don't want to fund it to the level that they may be coming and ask or something, whatever we put into that you don't use, you can transfer it back to the general fund at a later date.
Okay. I was going to ask, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but that list that you sent us, I was just curious how many things the state baseball league, or whatever they're called, which ones they were saying we needed to do, you know, versus, are these just a wish list?
Well, no, most of the elements on that list are addressing elements associated with supporting the 2018 Stadium Amateur Baseball Tournament, as well as trying to look at long-term improvements for the facility. If you take a look at what the school did, they just undertook a significant investment at the football stadium. As we take a look at this, we're not only doing it just for, we're not doing any improvements that we would bring to the table for just the 2018 Stadium Amateur Tournament. A number of the elements are being addressed with that long list of items, but it's also looking to the long term for the future of the baseball stadium in the community, is what modernization or upgrading needs to be done on that facility. So, pretty much all of them.
Yeah, so pretty much, you know, yeah, probably not, probably not that AstroTurf.
No, I know some, it's-
Right. Well, I think that the list was probably, working with, you know, Mike Shdika and Jerry Realarias, who-
The engineers came in and met with us for a couple of times in the committee to get, to gain an understanding of, based on the list that you saw from the baseball community as to what was needed, they listened to representatives from Little League Baseball all the way up to our amateur town ball in that process. And so, all of the things that you saw in that list was kind of a conceptual starting point with a broad range of cost estimates that are now being reviewed in January and February by the baseball representatives. They'll go through on each one of those elements and items and talk about what's being proposed, what do they need, how can they modify it, how can they change it. And so, we'll winnow down that list to whatever the improvements are going to be. It includes the cost, as if they were all actually bid out and constructed through the bidding process. If we can find donated labor or support to do different things, we'll take a look at it within there. But what you saw was just kind of that starting element of discussion. And so, they spent last week, we meet next week, two times in February, before hopefully that all gets synthesized down into an ultimate recommendation that'll come back to you. Councilmember Brusich was there for the whole discussion. I don't know if you've got anything you want to add, David, but-
Well, maybe to answer Pat a little bit more, everything that's on that list pretty much addresses a lot of the needs that baseball committee feels is vitally important to get us to the level of the 2018 tournament.
Is it their state agency that's saying we need to do things too?
Not specifically that I'm aware of.
No, I think the-
That discussion that took place is really the catalyst for why those elements are on the list. They may not all have to be done at the levels that you saw from a listing standpoint, but is to start and to provoke the discussion and the evaluation is, you know, what needs to happen in the infield, what needs to happen in the outfield, what do we have for restroom facilities, what do we have for- facilities, what do we have for concession stands, ticketing areas, the lighting, fencing, all those different areas will be examined throughout that process. And as we do that, it's all done to ensure that when we get done with the improvements is that it will put us in a position that we will satisfy or meet the requirements for hosting that tournament in 2018.
And Jerry Valerius and Mike Shdika have been in contact with people in that organization that has, you know, given New Prague the tournament. So they, yeah, so they basically, you know, kind of, you know, tell us, hey, this is kind of what we want to see happening next year or the year after. They kind of did put a timetable of things they do want to eventually see.
What's that agency that's...
Well, it's Minnesota State Amateur...
Baseball State.
Yeah, it's not a... It's more of a, you know, not really probably a state agency.
It's a statewide board is what it is, serviced by volunteers that represent the various sectors of baseball throughout the entire state of Minnesota.
They've asked for everything on that list in some form or another.
They have an outline of kind of minimal expectations of what we have at our local facility in order to be eligible to host a tournament of that nature. But in doing this is we're not just looking at that event, that we're trying to look at it, you know, we had the big baseball game last year, what, between New Prague and Minnetaka? As I recall.
Eden Prairie.
Eden Prairie, excuse me, where we host state tournaments or state playoffs or different things. We're trying to look beyond just the level of that one particular tournament, and so we're looking at that facet of improvements that will make us eligible to host many different types of tournaments within a broad range. But as you can see from that preliminary list of improvements, and you take lighting as an example, whether you replace heads, do different things that Glenn in the committee is looking at, you know, various elements can all be done, it just is gonna determine at what level and to what degree and how far do you go, and what's the end quality of that improvement, and they all have different price tags as you begin to look at that. And as you can see, it will be quite a comprehensive list that ultimately comes to you hopefully in March.
I tried to kind of look at like what the minimum you could possibly do, and it was pretty close to $1 million, so I was like, wow!
Well, that's just, yeah, but you're looking at those numbers, yeah, those...
No, that isn't even, that's like the least thing you can do.
Oh, right.
In the category.
And Pat, as I tried to indicate, that when you look at those things, as an example, I think there's one facility that's got the restroom, the concession stand, and storage, and I think the estimate was give or take about $285,000. It doesn't have to be at that level, and so part of the discussion is they explain what's in the square footage, how it would be built. Well, we start taking a look at different building materials, whether that's a publicly bid project, whether there's volunteer construction, do we really need all that space in one location, can we do different things? So we're starting to whittle each of those elements apart in the next meeting, that what you saw on that preliminary list is just an initial starting point. So there's lots of work to do to even winnow that down.
And again, that was, and that was the engineers coming up with the cost, you know, so it was, it was pretty inclusive, so, you know, unless the city wins a lottery or something like that.
But we're hoping between the funding that I think I can identify and work into the normal budget pieces without trying to increase taxes to do it, whether there's ultimately a school contribution towards the facility, what can the baseball community raise privately through different fundraising and different things, is it's gonna take a combination of all of those elements to help address whatever the list of improvements that are gonna be recommended. So this is just an opportunity to begin a set aside to help deal with that, and I think it would be a good start in the process.
Don't look at that list as gospel because...
Why wasn't?
The next one we come to is gonna be greatly modified from that because we narrowed some things down and requested other things, and so as we go through this, a lot of changes are gonna be made, and some things we'll be able to cut back on because of things that Glenn knows we can do or can't do, and so it'll change.
Okay. Well, thank you for that little explanation. Any other questions regarding the amending the 2014 budget? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to amend the 2014 budget as recommended by Patty.
Second.
Second by Amy Jurick. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, Patty. How's the audit going? You haven't started yet? Have you...
Yeah, we're doing prep work right now for them.
Okay.
It'll be the end of February.
When it'll be finished?
When the audit, yeah, when the audit will be finished.
Okay. Sounds good.
Go.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, this is you, Ken.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go through the whole report. I did want to note for the people walking, watching at home, they could download the summary of 2014 growth statistics report on the city website under the planning department. There's a link for the full report that you have in front of you here tonight. But a couple of key points to note for 2014, it was a positive year as far as new home construction. We went from 17 new homes in 2013 up to 30 in 2014, and we hadn't hit 30 homes since basically the economic downfall, so that was a positive sign. Value likewise relates directly to that, was up for single-family homes by about 2.1 million from 2013 to 2014. Did want to note, we did have a decrease in the average home construction value, and a lot of that had to do, we had a lot more what you'd really term starter homes around that lower tier, going up in various neighborhoods. There'd be near Raven Stream Elementary School, to name one of them, had a couple of other homes down in the Takowski Acres neighborhood, and not that that's a bad thing by any means because that's where we do have a lot of available lots in large quantities, so overall a positive year for that type of construction. We did not have any townhomes or multifamily homes constructed, which basically term anything over a four-unit building in attached fashion. For the eighth year in a row, we did not have anything of that magnitude. Commercial and industrial permits, we had a slight decrease from 31 permits in 2013 to 26 in 2014, and likewise, you saw that drop in the value from 2.7 million to about 1.1 million. We did obviously have some notable commercial projects, brand-new O'Reilly Auto Parts store, which opened right at the beginning of the year here in January of 2015. Extensive remodel to the exterior at Dairy Queen, if you haven't been down that way to see their new look. The patio area for the Prairie Pond Winery and Vineyard was completed and opened this year, and then some other alterations at New Prague Gymnastics Club, and that's not an all-encompassing listing, just a highlight of those informational statistics there. I don't have it tonight, but I hope to have it by the next meeting. I do an annual building audit, basically all the commercial buildings, to see all the new businesses that moved in and out or around within New Prague that I'll present to you at the next meeting, along with our vacant lot inventory. It's kind of companion to this report, so you get a good overview of what's available and what sort of lands we have available for new homes. We are actually under 250 lots available now, whereas not that many years ago, we had over 350 lots to build on, so we're making headway as far as that goes, but we've got a few years' inventory built up even today, so...
Any permits yet for 2015?
We actually just got another application for new home permit in today, and I think there was one other one. I had to look at Mary Jo because she sees them come in usually first, so... Yeah, I think it'll be another good year. I don't want to say we'll reach 30 again, but I hope we would. It's a good manageable level of growth, so...
Good. Well, thank you for this information. Look forward to the additional information regarding the status of the commercial and open lots, so... Anyone have any questions at all for Ken regarding this update?
Yeah, I saw one house that they took out across from the library kind of down.
That was the Obizik House.
Obizik House, yeah.
Yep. Technically take that. We do occasionally get tear downs, and we do report those to the Metropolitan Council, and that ends up going into our statistics for housing, population updates for both the state and Met Council, because we're split down Scott County. The Met Council does our demographic projections and then the review.
Do we know any plans of what they plan to do there? Or just open space?
It'll split between the two neighboring property owners at this point, so...
Yeah. Yeah, well, that won't surprise me.
Yep, so there will not be another home there...
Right.
...anytime soon.
Okay.
There also is a new map at the back of his packet that was new this year, attempting to kind of show you where the new housing starts were actually initiated for construction.
Oh, that's right, it's in here.
Yes.
Those, the homes on Flag, and those aren't townhomes? What are they?
We don't consider those townhomes, those are attached, single-family.
Okay.
That's what they're technically called.
Okay.
You get over the four units, and then they start reporting as multifamily, so not until you reach that threshold.
Okay, well, thanks again, Ken. Ken, I assume you're gonna take the next one, too, the comprehensive plan miscellaneous updates?
The wife's gonna call you.
All right, I have a fairly brief PowerPoint for the comprehensive plan updates, and by all means, if you have questions as we go along, please stop me. And also want to note, if you have any other things to correct or notes to make or additions to add, you could also give me that list during the meeting here or after the meeting, however you'd like to do, because I do propose to simply introduce the updates here tonight and then bring it back to you at the February 2nd meeting for action on the resolution, which was included in your packet, but just for information at this point, so... Moving along with the PowerPoint. We have, as you're all aware, a comprehensive plan in New Prague that does establish our guidelines for future growth and development in the city through the year 2035. It's an all-inclusive document, and all the chapters that you see in the overhead are included in the comprehensive plan, however, with this particular set of updates, all the ones in red are the ones that we're updating. So that would include Chapter 1, which is essentially the history of the community, Chapter 4 for the physical profile and natural resources, Chapter, forget the chapter names of some of these, but another chapter is community facilities, another one is public utilities, and then finally, the last chapter is implementation tools. These are basically the updates that were not made back in 2012 when we focused on land use, housing, demographics, transportation, and then 2013, we updated the park chapter. These are basically just what was left over, not any less important, but simply things that didn't need to be done as soon as the other ones, and were done basically in-house by staff, by myself, and Public Works, Glenn, that was a big help in a number of these, Bruce Reimers, Jim Gores, and we had a good review by all of us involved in the city here. So the comprehensive plan is an official document or what we would call a local law. It can be used, or is to be used, as a policy to guide decisions about the redevelopment and development of the community. Since June of 2014, the planning commission has been reviewing these chapters, and once again, those are the chapters listed there that I already commented on. So we had six months of review. We did basically wrap up the planning commission's review on December 17th at their meeting, did hold a public hearing, which is required per statute, and the only two comments received were actually received prior to the hearing and are in the packet from Helena Township, who basically noted that they support our efforts of collaboration in the past, and also noted that they would like to work on updating our orderly annexation agreement, which is something we've wanted to do for a number of years. And then the other comments were from Scott County, who also noted that they would help work with us and Helena Township on the orderly annexation agreement updates. And the other comments they had was they wanted a map included from the county's own comp plan on natural area corridors, which we did include. And then they noted also, one of the items in the Chapter 10 for public facilities, which I'll comment on a little later, that they also recommend that we update our sanitary sewer system map that helps them plan for the growth boundary around New Prague in their own comprehensive plan update, which is forthcoming. So those are the items for public comment that we received for the public hearing. Chapter 1, very straightforward, and I don't know if you want to kind of follow through the chapters here, but I'm just gonna go through on the PowerPoints. Chapter 1 is update of our essential history, what the plan purpose is, and basically included updated information from our historic context study, which was completed through a historical society grant, and then included a new area map. Chapter 4 is the next chapter that was reviewed, updated the physical profile of the city, noting in the past 10 years since this was last updated, the city expanded by over 400 acres in size, so it was pretty significant to note. Other information in here, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has updated list of stormwater permits, which included our new wastewater treatment plant in this chapter, which was upgraded. Had some corrected and upgraded groundwater information, which is basically where a city has wells and private wells in the city that might be in existence. We have a list of leaking underground storage tanks per MPCA, and if you remember back to the used car dealership at the old West End pit stop, that was one of the underground storage tanks that was listed in the MPCA list, which has now been removed, so it's a good resource for that type of situation throughout the community. And then we updated all the maps, including our topography map, water resources, national wetland inventory, FEMA floodplain maps, watershed areas, soils, et cetera, and natural area corridors, including the one that Scott County wanted included in the chapter, so some updated information there. Moving along to the more specific items, actually to New Prague, would be for the community facilities and public services chapter, which is Chapter 9. Updated information, and this includes all of our city facilities, including the golf club building, which was remodeled since the last time this chapter was updated. We have a brand-new fire station since the last time this was updated, as well as a new wastewater treatment plant. Also obtained new information from other community facilities, such as from Mayo Clinic, Health System Hospital, library, some statistics in there. Our pool condition assessment, for example, is also included in this chapter. Number of surveys that we've completed in the past 10 years are included, 2011 performance measurement survey information, and again, our 2014 aquatics facility survey related to our outdoor pool, and included that information. We had, back in 2012, updated our projected growth information. That was reflected in this chapter. Updated policies and objectives, such as cooperating with the school district, which will lead to one of our later agenda items at the council meeting here tonight, as we talk about cooperation with the school district on a potential indoor pool. So that was added in the objectives for this chapter. Noting a future need for the assessment of the condition of City Hall and its future, as well as all the maps, including our city facilities maps, fire district map, ambulance map, which actually is not city ambulance any longer, but just noting our service area, and then a new school district map. Public utilities, and this is a chapter that had to rely heavily on Public Works and Utilities for the information on, and basically just background information, more than anything. It's not very detailed, and that's not the intent, but have updated information on our, still call it the... still call it the new wastewater treatment plant, which began its first full year of operation in 2012. One big item in here, and that's been talked about, kind of on the periphery with the EDA, and certainly will be coming more of a topic into the future, is the need to update our comprehensive sanitary sewer plan, which was last updated in 2003 by SEH, actually, and that basically identifies large improvements for the trunk sewer system for sanitary sewer capacity needs. Boils all down to a large trunk line being needed on both the west and east sides of the city to accommodate further growth outside of our, essentially almost our city limits that we have today. So, it's an important but expensive potential improvements that need to be made, so, and as I noted, the county, Scott County thought that was important to have that updated, that'll help incorporate changes into their land use plan as we plan for future growth out into the unincorporated areas into the future. We had updated information in this chapter on the water system, including we had a new water tower built since 2004 and one additional well, that information was added in the plan. Also note the site for a potential and planned future third tower, which would actually be located south of Conroe 29, south of Takovsky Acres, if you're familiar with that area, on the southeast side of town. Right now in that area, we actually have a water booster station along 10th Avenue, so the tower is actually the long-term solution to that particular end of town. We reference our city's wellhead protection plans, we have a Part 1 and Part 2 wellhead protection plan. Updated municipal electric system, and you see the map in there, it's not the actual electric system map, because it's a very messy map with all the feeders and other lines shown on that map, so just want to note that we did have that upgraded map available. Then other maps, including sanitary sewer, ISTS is actually individual septic treatment systems, and we have a few of those in town yet. Then all of our electric service territory maps, sanitary sewer, and then finally the Cedar Lake sanitary sewer district map, which we did not have in our plan previously, but just a good reference point that it is out there. Finally, the chapter on implementation is able to be done, not that we have all the other chapters updated. This chapter notes things that needed to be, need to be worked on, in effect, as pertains to planning department goals and other processes in the city, so a lot of the implementation items from the 2004 version, excuse me, being amended here tonight, were actually taken care of in various zoning ordinance amendments. The removal of the zoning ordinance already made, excuse me, includes we added provisions for interim use permits, home occupations, and screening requirements, and we do want to consider new development trends in the zoning ordinance as well, such as breweries, which we already did back in 2014. The updated, most recent subdivision ordinance was done in 2010, 2011, took care of a number of the items that needed to be taken care of in the 2004 plan, so that, a lot of that work was already done. Suggesting a capital improvement plan for citywide improvements, and the need for sanitary sewer trunk lines, excuse me. Finally, and this is actually a pretty important one, and Scott County recognizes the importance, as well as the city and the townships, is updated growth and annexation recommendations. We have very old early annexation agreements with Helena and Lanesburg Townships, they're from, actually from the late 1970s, and they've been working just fine, but it's time to get those updated. We've actually tried to begin conversations on that about seven, eight years ago, and for whatever reason, the townships didn't have a whole lot of interest at that time, but I think we're at the point where we really need to move forward with that. It basically outlines situations where the city is able to more quickly accommodate future developments and annexations when they're done at the request of a developer. You know, we're not out there trying to grab land from any township, basically for no reason at all, it's, it's to accommodate city services and, and development, and things that we may or may not have coming up would be probably not very likely anytime soon, housing, but maybe commercial development, industrial park, commercial land, et cetera. So, those situations just would be, go a little more smoothly if we had some new annexation agreements in place.
Are the only, are those the only two townships that border us?
Those are the only two townships that we have any relation to as far as planning and annexation at this point, correct? Eventually, we will get into getting nearer to Rice County and maybe even Cedar Lake Township, but they're beyond our growth boundary at this point.
Yeah.
But tonight's meeting, as I said, I'm just looking to introduce the amendments, take any comments and feedback that you might have, and at the February 2nd meeting, would be looking for approval of the resolution, which has to actually have a four out of five voting in the affirmative to approve that resolution, and do that at the February 2nd meeting, so looking for any comments and feedback here. Again, you know, these are kind of the miscellaneous chapters, we didn't have a whole lot of public interest going through this at the planning commission, I think a couple of times, we had a couple of people at the meetings, but not as interesting as parks or land use as we did the past couple of years, but interesting to me, anyway, so.
Good. Any questions?
Well, I, I was gonna talk to you, but I didn't get time today, but I have, you know, clarification, just some things.
Sure.
Yeah?
A bunch of them, so I'll just call you or something.
Okay.
Are we gonna have a full council at the?
You're not gonna be here, are you?
Me?
Second?
February 2nd, I think it will.
Okay, but Mark's gonna be gone, so we might want to defer that.
Push it back.
We certainly could.
Yeah. Mark just mentioned that he's not gonna be at the second meeting, so we may want to defer that to this, the 17th would be the meeting, that Tuesday, right? Because of presidents?
Yeah, President's Day, probably.
So, it would be Tuesday, the 17th, what?
Need a four out of five, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta have four or five to approve it, so.
Well, if you got four, you're now, vote yes.
Oh, that's true.
That would work, too.
Yeah, well, just keep that in consideration.
Yeah, well, actually, that probably would work better in case we have a number of clarifications or corrections to make in there.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I guess Pat will get it with you, Ken, and kind of gonna get some clarification on certain things, so. Appreciate the information, again, thank you for the hard work. Now, I, being that we're not in the Met Council, I suppose we don't have to worry about all that fun stuff of changing the commissioners at the council and the new head and.
No, we're grateful, well, I don't want to say we're grateful, but just fine not being in the Met Council.
Yes, no, I agree, I, I agree, I'm sure Shock, being in Savage, and that they're gonna just love that.
It's nice, because we could work on our own timeframe and our own need schedule, which I think makes more sense than mandated timeframe, but that's my personal experience with it, so.
Essentially, the council acts as that policy body, but we're not governed by them in regulating over the top of you as far as meeting certain other standards or policies that control the seven county metropolitan statistical area.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, parking. Are you taking this, Glenn, or are you?
Winter parking.
Jim, or?
Honorable mayor and no less honorable city council members, we are here tonight to, just this memorandum in regards to amendment of city or code section 72.02. The mayor brought up some discussion at the January 6th meeting, and the staff looked at it, and in an attempt to kind of clarify things, some verbiage was removed and some added to clarify certain points. Also, while reviewing the ordinance, it appeared that a section was not translated when we adopted the new ordinance in regards to wanting to be able to maintain our roads all year round at any time that it's necessary. As the ordinance reads right now, it restricts parking from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. After that, you could park anywhere on the road. I wanted to clarify that a little better by designating winter parking restriction with the dates, November 1st through March 31st, and then moving to B. So, we can start with 7202 clause A. I'm sorry, first of all, the title of it, the mayor brought up to remove due to snow, that would be stricken from it, as you can see on the clarification ordinance numbers to New Prague on the following sheet. Winter parking restriction would be added for bullet number A on, on your clause A. At the beginning denotes the regulation pertains to parking during winter months, just to clarify that designation. Also in that, we look to remove a comma between public street and publicly owned parking lot and place an or. Just to clarify, it also goes to bullet 3 then, to remove or public alley. In the ordinance itself, we're allowing people to park on our streets and public, or publicly owned parking lots after 5:00 a.m. We can't allow them to park on an alley. It's a right of way, you can't park in an alley, so I would just want to remove that right out of the board.
And nobody can ever park there in an alley?
In an alley? No, the alley is just a road right of way, and if you're parked in it, you're impeding that right of way.
Is that noted any place in any other part of the ordinances?
Alley? Um, not that I'm aware of, in, as in 72?
No, any place in any of our ordinances? Do we address alleys and what they can be used for or not used for, or what they can?
I'd have to review that.
Do you know, Ken?
Offhand, I do not.
I don't know, but like Jim was saying, basically, if you parked in an alley, you would impede any traffic flow through it, because that was the idea, but I don't know if there's or not.
There's a, I mean, there's a state statute that you can't park on a roadway or stand or be in the road right of way blocking traffic.
Yeah.
That, that state statute would supersede our ordinance, I believe, that if anybody was parked in an alley, that's what we would write him for.
But I don't know if most people know that, because alleys are typically used only by the, the adjacent property owners, and if they park in there, they're probably not gonna care or realize that, hey, there is a state statute that governs that.
Well, I think we addressed it a few months ago, when, or a couple of months ago, when somebody came and talked about the alley and getting through private property to get to the alley. That's the idea, that it's public right of way, the alley is our public right of way. If there's not access to it, that's private parking. So, the idea would be anytime somebody's gonna park along an alleyway, it's gonna be on that private property, not blocking the alley.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that our residents understand that, and I'm not sure they do. That's my only point, Jim.
And we, we get calls about people parking too far on the alley right of way, and we would go and talk to the owner and, or the vehicle owner and say, hey, you are blocking the alley right of way, you can't park there, but ultimately, yeah, they could be issued a citation for it.
But I agree with you, Dave, I, I think people view alleys completely different than, you know, I know I've gone through our alley to go to my business, and I had somebody, hey, this is, you know, can't you use the street? And I'm like, I'm, I'm just, you know, and, and just going through the alley to go to park in the backyard of a business, and it's.
Yeah, maybe we could put something in the newsletter that goes out with the utility bill that clarify what an alley is and what it isn't. What you can and can't do.
Yeah, Ken just emailed out for March, and I will work on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thanks, Jim.
Uh, number four bullet is language, add language, parking is allowed outside these hours on a public street or public owned, publicly owned parking lot, provided it is not a violation of clause B, snow removal restriction below. Which takes us to clause B then. Clause B, I looked at and wanted to simplify that language so that our residents would be more clear in reading that ordinance and seeing what it actually pertains to. Clause B would be snow removal restriction, denoting the regulation pertains to restricted parking for snow removal. That's the intent of the clause, that if the snow, the plows have to come out, vehicles are restricted from parking on that. Goes on to clarify, to remove 2:00 a.m. until 5:00 a.m. of each day beginning April 2nd until October 31st of the same year. That is to end that restricted time period. The idea of snow removal restriction is anytime there's a significant snowfall, the snow is gonna have to be removed, whether that falls in those dates or outside those dates. Bullet 3 is to add any time during the year, that was the idea to clarify those dates, take them away, but any time during the, during the year, it would allow city officials' authority to maintain roads and clear snow when necessary. As of right now, as the ordinance currently reads, again, even for snow removal, after 5:00 a.m., people could park on the street, because it doesn't have more language in it. And I discussed this with Glenn at the time, we were looking at it, that do you want more than three hours to clean the streets in New Prague? Yeah, they're gonna need that longer time period. Number four was, again, just a, uh, picking out a comma and then removing the alley also, and putting an or between them. Five is removing the language of or a public alley. I also wanted to clarify and remove this language when a, the National Weather Service has forecast snow accumulation of two inches or more from this, for the city. Again, parking cannot be allowed on the alley right of way, and additional language would be removed to utilize more clarifying language as noting in, in the following bullet number six. There, I was just looking to add during a snow event for the restricted time, and then until the snow has been plowed to full width of the street, curb to curb. I also, and also, for the purpose of this section, the definition for snow event shall have the following meaning, when two or more inches of snow has accumulated from a continuous or intermittent snowfall. These additions would allow the public to better understand the purpose of clause B, snow removal restriction, by designating whenever two or more inches of snow accumulates, it triggers a snow event, and no parking is allowed on the street until they are plowed full width. Glenn and I had talked about situations where you might have a snowfall that starts early morning, and you get eight inches before noon, you're gonna want to come out there and clean some of that off, because it's probably gonna take a longer period of time. At the same time, realizing a business are taking place, people are gonna be parked, but you would want to be able to plow as best you can do that. And even to the degree that maybe you have certain areas that do have issues up along the school here, if First Avenue is all parked full, by having this language in there, it would give authority for the street department or the police department to at least make contact with those. authority for the street department or the police department to at least make contact with those areas and say, hey, they're all plowing right now, we need you. As, as the ordinance is written right now.
I have a, just a question that, to clarify for the business district. So according to this, if a snowfall happens downtown on Main Street, it doesn't have a time, so what would happen?
Generally, they're not going to get plowed until the following night.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, there wouldn't be anything that would change. This language added to this ordinance, basically just as Jim said, gives us the authority to walk into a place of business or, uh, the school district or the areas we know that it can be a problem or hard to get through and ask them to move. It's not, it's not looking that we're going to be the bad guy, cause anybody a lot of trouble. It just gives us the authority to walk in there and say, you know, we're, we're trying to plow the street. Um, you know, can I have you move to the other side of the road? Can you move down to the parking lot? Um, just get some up and at them. Main Street won't change at all. There's really nothing we can do there.
See, but I've had a couple instances, I get into the office fairly early and I park on Columbus. And I know last year with a lot of the snow things, snowplow wasn't done with our street yet. So, I mean, you know, and this is 6:30 in the morning and so I'm going, well, where can I park? You know, under this, where would I be able to park? I can't park in the alley. You know, that, that's just my, you know, because it, last year it happened two or three times. I beat the plow to work. And it's after 5:00, so I'm thinking, well, I can, by law, I can park anywhere. But now you're saying if there's more than two inches of snow, I really can't park, and then I'm going to, where can I park?
Another place of business was one that came up as discussion.
Oh. Okay. Cause we're always there probably before the plows get through, because you don't look at us, you know, because we're just on the outer edge of the commercial thing, you know, we're the last house there. And I know for a fact, a lot of times the plows go through and there's five of us already parked on the street, working. Because we're all crazy and, and in the office real early.
I think in that, in that time, that would be a time where the plow goes through, cleans what he can, and is either going to make contact themselves, the driver would get out and go in and make contact, or let the police department know, and we go over there and make contact. But the idea would be if a pass or two was made, they're still on the street to come and notify a place of business that, hey, could you have your people move over and? And again, depending on what's going to go on, I mean, if this is a continual snowfall, are they going to be coming back out to plow? Yeah, they're going to be.
Yeah, every situation's got to be looked at, you know, at that time. Um, me and Jim talked quite a bit about, you know, the wording in this, and Jim did a great job with it. Um, but we're also looking for the future. The future for us would be, um, eventually having, uh, uh, the, the crew, when they come out to plow snow, uh, the people that are causing us trouble, like the business owners in Pershing there, um, to have them in an email and send out an email saying the plows are going out. If you can watch for the plow, once he plows one side of the road, move your vehicle onto that side of the road, because then he'll come back through and catch the side of the road that you're on. Um, you know, a lot of the bigger communities do that today, as there's no event, uh, policy or procedure, notifying areas that this is happening today. Uh, you know, you hear it in the metro all the time, the odd evening, plowing, things like that. Um, this gives us the right to do that, or the, the the fact to say, well, okay, we notified you, you didn't move, this is the, you know, I don't know, third time it's happened, so yeah, you're, you're probably going to get a ticket.
Previous to the ordinance change, um, the, the process generally was the plows went out and they they let the police department know where vehicles were that they plowed around. And we would not issue citations until vehicles were plowed around. Cause that indicated they were out there. Um, we, I think we have, we have, uh, enforced the new ordinance with the two to five parking, which generally works out well, because that's when they come out to plow. They come out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock and they start plowing. Um, and streets are cleared for that process.
We're going to have a select few areas in town that we're always going to deal with when it comes to snow removal. Um, this ordinance, when it got passed, the two to five was a huge improvement, was just really made the job go a lot better. The ordinance didn't, i- i- if you were not parked on the street in front of your house, you didn't get up at 5:00 in the morning and go move your car onto the street, because it was 5:15. Uh, you got up and you got ready for work and you drove to work. Again, we're going to have the select few areas, um, that you're just always going to have to deal with. That's just the way it is. There's not that many of them. When, when this ordinance was passed, the no parking on the street from 2:00 to 5:00, um, made it huge. Cut down our plowing time. Cut down the time we had to come back to clean up the street because of all the cars in the residential area that were parked. There's just some areas that, you know, even if it is at 5:00 or at 5:15, um, I think I said it the last time we were talking about it. I remember plowing one night and going down a street on the southeast side of town, and I could not get through with the plow. There were so many cars parked on the road. I had to call the police department and they helped me. Basically, they did a great job, they started banging on doors and saying, can you move your car? But I couldn't get through with the plow. Um, if that's at 5:15 in the morning, this new writing of this ordinance gives us the right to ask them to move, get them to move, and if they don't move, well then, we do have a little bit of teeth behind the ordinance.
We've also talked about, as Glenn mentioned earlier, about the, uh, email, as we take a look at, uh, technologies and how we can do a better job of communicating with the public, is that just like we have a list, that anybody wants to be on the list to receive, uh, agendas for city council meetings, we can go to, when we determine that there's a snow event, anybody that wants to get on that list, that we're talking about, how can we work that within the street department before they go out? That we send out that email blast that goes out to anybody that wants to be on the list. Second part of it is how can we use Twitter a little bit better to maybe put out an announcement, uh, that way as well? Trying to find different ways to help provide additional information if we're going to implement a snow event change. Something we haven't done, but as we talked about this and looking at this, how can we do a better job? Is trying to improve the, the content of what's in here, and then what additional, uh, uh, communication mediums can we try to use to try to aid and assist the department in that process?
Are you eliminating the case by case?
No.
No.
No. So.
Just amending those, uh,
A and B. A and B, are you amending, and C and, and D are, are you reining the same?
Correct.
I move we approve this amendment to the city code and that we consider this the first reading.
Okay, got a motion by Mark Bartusik.
Second.
Second by Dave Bruszek to, uh, amend this, uh, code as proposed, and, uh, this would be considered the first reading. Any other comments?
I have a request, but I'll do it after the vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, first reading passes, 5-0.
Uh, Jim? When, or Glenn, when you go by uh, the mayor's.
Pershing?
Yeah, Pershing. Or a business, can you notify Pat so he's out there when you're giving him a ticket? So he can put it in the paper.
I, we can submit photos also.
Yeah, well, that'd be even better, yeah.
Well, no, anytime there's a big snowfall, I'm walking to work now.
I was going to suggest that before.
Thank goodness. Well, I usually do if it's a lot, but sometimes.
Why don't you just have one of the snowplows?
Yeah, I'll just sit out there with my thumb out there, maybe some.
You'd have to get up early then.
Yeah, you guys would have to, yeah. Maybe I should sleep in on the days of snow, I'll give you guys a chance.
Well, we could see, we're going to see how this works after the second reading, right? And if we have a lot of issues.
Well, then it takes 30 days, right?
30 days of publication before it's effective, uh, so we may be just about on the, the downhill side, uh, although there are, it's not atypical to have the end of March into first April, the, some of the big snowstorms, so uh, we're at more of the tail end of the season though.
Like last year when we had a lot of snow. Yeah, but.
But yes, the council, if you find for any reason, as we go through the implementation, that you don't like the way it's working, there's too many complaints, you always have the abilities to modify and amend it back or to do something different.
This is a touchy subject, and I think in any community. You know, like the people I talked to when they said, you know, or, and I said, you know what, you'd be the same people complaining to me if your street didn't get plowed the way you liked it, and they all agreed, you're probably right, so.
And now we added more to it.
I don't think we added more to it, we made it simpler to understand. It's a lot simpler now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we'd like to believe. I'm, I'm, I would like to think that we didn't add more to it. I think Jim did a great job and we just made it easier for people to understand.
More verbiage, but better clarified, I think.
Like I said, for most people, you're not going to get up at 5:15 and move your car onto the street just because you can park on the street after 5:00 AM. It's just not going to be. So we're not, I don't know that we're going to see a big change in anything. I think the two to five helped so much.
Like I said, is, if, I would get an email saying, Chuck, we're going to be on your street in five minutes, I, I don't have a problem with my car. It's just that last year, you know, with a lot of heavy snowfall, a lot of times I'm like, you know, and, and it's not me, there's two or three of us that are getting the office early, you, you park on the road, because you're going to work and and you don't want to park on Main Street, because then those guys, Vin Dot, just really, after they get done plowing and all this, so they put on your car, it'd be, be done, but.
I think you're better off walking.
Yeah. I probably, it probably would suit me better too. Okay. Next on the agenda, Mike, are you going to take, uh, the resolution regarding the, uh?
Yes, at the January 6th meeting, you had the superintendent and the, uh, director of business services that appeared before you talking about, uh, the conceptual cost sharing on a swimming pool, operating costs, if a new indoor pool is built by the school district following, uh, hopefully a may referendum. As you recall, they were, the school board was looking for some level of support from the council and a commitment to participating in covering some of the operating costs. All of the details, uh, not yet worked out, uh, ultimately would have to be put together in a joint powers agreement. So as we work with the school staff, uh, what you have included with this memo is a draft outline of a memorandum. Uh, we asked the school to, uh, pen a first draft. Uh, they did, we made revisions, uh, it, uh, was reviewed and approved by the superintendent and the business manager. And so the document you have, uh, passed muster with them for your consideration this evening.
Any questions?
I think the biggest piece I would point out to you would be number two, is that conceptually the financial arrangement would provide for the school district and city to share operating losses equally, subject to the joint powers agreement. So ultimately, the details would have to be worked out, since we don't know all of the answers to everything at this point, they would have to be worked out between the city and the school, placed in the joint powers agreement, and then both bodies would have to ultimately adopt that. So you're not technically agreeing to anything that conceptually hasn't been developed at this point. But I think it gives the outline or the framework to the school board that there's a willingness on behalf of the council to work with them.
Did you run this by Tim at all?
Both the superintendent and the business finance person approved it before we put it on your agenda. They did the initial draft, we just made modifications and enhancements and.
And you also ran it by Scott, you said?
Yes, I did.
So. Okay, any other questions, uh, regarding this? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, adopting the joint.
Second.
The second by Pat Scripture. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Now, it's balls in their court. Consent agenda, anything that needs to be discussed? Any corrections, modification, clarifications on the consent agenda?
Uh, yes, I have one on the, on B for the claims for, um, the Rotary Club. Uh, it's my understanding with the Minnesota State Auditor that that's one of the memberships that cannot be paid. I know Mike stated that it's in his contract. But I disagree with this. This particular membership cannot have public funds, because it's a private. Anyways, Mike said he would check into it, but I'm wondering if we can pull that one off and approve everything else besides that until next time.
Under administration?
Oh, the dues.
So Mike, you're going to look into that?
Yep, I told Amy that I would, that.
Okay, so maybe we should.
Due initially by the city attorney when my contract was first approved, and, uh, it was deemed that there was a public benefit derived from that, but, uh, with what she's brought to my attention, I'll go take a look at it and review it and get back to you.
Okay, okay. So can you take it off the list? Thank you. Anything else?
How's, uh, the new cleaning service? I see we had a bill from them, how's that going?
Uh, so far, we think it's going very well. Um, they've been very cooperative. They're learning the process. They're always amazed at how many different ways there is to get up and down around the old city hall, but, uh, um, they're learning all the little nooks and crannies in all the storage rooms and, so, uh, I think it's going great. We've talked to the library staff, they're very pleased at this point. Um, so if it continues to go as it is, and hopefully gets better, um, I, I think it was a good move. So, going well.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Someone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one?
Two moved.
Taking out the payment?
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture made the initial motion, second by Mark Bartusik. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. miscellaneous. Jim, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Glenn?
Uh, just wanted to comment a little bit more on the baseball committee meeting from, uh, January 14th. Um, INS, I think, uh, needs, um, a big round of applause. They did a, a lot of work, uh, for that meeting. Um, they put a lot of numbers together just to kind of show the whole picture. This is your possibilities. And, uh, the group that is together as far as the baseball committee, um, great input. Uh, there was a lot of great discussion. Um, they're all very level minded people, they're all not just going to grab the most expensive thing and um, so it was a good meeting, and INS did a lot of work and, and I see them doing a lot more work for us, so. Um, our next meeting is January 28th, at 6:00, uh, in the council chambers at city hall, so uh, just wanted to touch base on that, I thought it was talked about a little bit before, but.
Good. Ken?
Just a quick update, everybody got the, uh, that trail survey in their, uh, last utility bill, as, uh, Brent from Region 9 mentioned, Region 9 is actually working with us on our statewide health improvement program. Um, funding that we didn't get directly, but it was through Region 9, and, uh, that survey was part of that, and we had, uh, as of today, just, uh, under 300 paper copies filled out and pretty close to the equal amount filled out online as well, so that's actually a really good return, uh, for, for that type of a survey. We, I think we did one a couple of years ago and had about 150 responses, so. They thank you to all the residents that took time to fill it out.
Good. Thank you. Now, maybe, gave me a topic for my newsletter. Thanking the residents for doing surveys, okay. Pat?
Oh, I just had a, um, I looked at the golf course financials and with all the others, and wondered, did we ever transfer the 121,000? We did? I didn't see it in there, but.
Pat, you should have done that, that, uh.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, David? Amy?
No.
Mark?
I want to know if Pat could run a correction. Our first picture that was in the New Prague Times, my name was Mark Bruszek.
I know, yeah. Mark and Dave Bruszek.
It's not only Chuck that calls me the wrong name, Pat does too.
Must be the different side, must have been a different side of the family, shortened the tie.
Yeah, I guess we shouldn't stand next to each other, Dave.
Certainly not.
Each other.
I, I tried to get my brother down here for tonight's meeting, so that he could take your seat, but.
He does have a brother, Mark. He does have a brother, Mark.
He's stubborn.
Then we'd really have a mess, so.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I got.
Okay, Patrick, you got anything? Besides apologizing to, yeah, okay. Mary Jo? All right.
Um, Friday was the deadline, uh, for the park.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay, how many applicants did you? Okay.
Before the next meeting.
But you want to save a day, then just do it at 6:15 and 6:30 ahead of next?
Not going to be here.
Maybe I'll send you that, I'm just offering.
I'll just jump on the grenade.
But if you wanted to go from 6:15 to 6:45 ahead of the meeting, that way you could keep it on the same night as the regular meeting and not waste another evening if.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
I don't want to hold it up because of me.
Yeah, no, yeah, we could probably schedule for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll plan the conference room.
Yeah.
Here and, uh, set them up at 6:15, 6:30, and so you're done by about quarter to seven.
Yes, that's good that we got two responses, good.
So did she surprise you then?
Oh, Mary Jo?
Because you always say it's going to surprise.
She was waiting for it. She had that little smirk on her face. Anything else, Mary Jo, now that you're a very integral part of the meeting now? Okay, Mike?
No.
I don't have anything. I guess if nothing else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mark Bruszek, see, they didn't, they, they both, they both said it at the same time, but no, Mark Bartusik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? We're out of here, thank you.
I can call.
About.